All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council of Missouri City Order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of council, everyone is present. If you will stand, Chief Sanders is going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. The colors are already posted.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
It's a...it won't operate right, okay. It's a unique time for us and a special time for us tonight that we recognize someone very special and near and dear to the hearts of us in the fire department. Judy Rogers, if you'll please come up here. Judy is retired from the City of Missouri City October 31st after 38 years and two months with the city. Family, y'all come up here, too. Come on, family. This is a special time. As I stated, Judy had 38 years with the city. She spent 19 years in building permits, five years with the city secretary's office, and 14 years in the fire department. Judy was that friendly voice and smile that greeted everyone either by the telephone or the visitors to the fire administration building. I will tell you that she ran a very efficient, strict office, made things work very, very well in our organization. Through her career, she's seen many changes in this city. She started out when the city hall was the little bitty building over here on Orchard Street.
310 Orchard.
310 Orchard, she has it memorized. You know, Judy is always, always willing to help others, no matter if it was in the fire department, citizen, or another fellow employee. And I think that when you look at someone leaving an organization, you always look at the legacy that they left. And I think the legacy that Judy left with the City of Missouri City is her customer service. Because she was always willing to help, she always had that smile, and when you talked to her on the phone, you could tell she was smiling on the other end. So Judy, from every member of the fire department, the city, and the citizens, we congratulate you on your retirement, and we thank you for your service of 38 years with the City of Missouri City.
Be nice, Mayor, be nice.
Well, I just thought it was kind of interesting that you would pick a fossil watch. For a fossil.
They're all talking.
No, I just thought that was how fitting that was, but, you know, here I am with the, what I call the glocks and clock, and presenting another timepiece, I guess, that kind of serves. But, yes, I can remember when Judy was just a little girl, working in that building down there on Present Street. It was a beautiful building, it leaked. Yeah, you remember, the roof leaked on it. It was not a very nice thing. It was not...
It's purpose.
I know, it served its purpose, and it's too bad it didn't burn, but it ended up being a lot more since then, but, you know, Judy and I go way back. We were laughing the other day. She's got more years than I do with the city, but not many more. I was working at a bank down the street from the city when she was in that office and doing a lot of things together. But, you know, I think Chief Sanders is right. I think the thing that made Judy different from other people was her personality and the way that she treats other people. And, you know, I think that makes a lot of difference when you're dealing with public service that our, you know, both our police and our fire department do, because a lot of times, people that they deal with have been through a lot, you know, their lives have been changed, and so they, you know, for them to get a friendly voice and a friendly helping hand when they probably didn't like some of the things that our fire marshal did, but, you know, thanks like that, Russell. But, anyway, Judy was always there for them, and she was a very important part, I think, of holding that department together, and lord knows she's been through some changes and some different bosses, Russell.
Yes.
I won't tell you what you said about you, but the others were all nice. But, anyway, Judy, on behalf of the rest of council, myself, and the citizens of Missouri City, I just want to congratulate you on these 39 great years that you have given to the city. That's a...that is a tremendous sacrifice, not only on your behalf, but on your family's behalf, right? I know.
Don't listen to them.
Really? You weren't even born yet, what are you talking about? Huh? You're a late bloomer in this deal, or you came along later, so. Anyway, Judy, on behalf of us, I do want to present you with this beautiful watch that you picked out, you fossil, you.
Surprise!
Now, you can't cry. Just say goodbye, let's sit down.
I have to...
Oh, you've got written notes?
I had to, because my...
Oh, this ought to be interesting.
No, first of all, Mayor and council, I just want to say thank you all for 38 years.
Want me to read it?
Missouri City, the employees, the citizens, that I've gotten a chance to know, will always hold a special place in my heart. And I never realized just how hard it would be to live a department until I left the fire department. You won't find a greater group of people to work with and for the Missouri City Fire and Rescue Services. I love them all, and I'll miss you. God bless you all and keep you safe.
Now, as I said, I just rounded it off to 39. I didn't say it was 38, two months, 20...
Two months.
Two days, whatever, I just said...
That year's a two months.
No, it's closer to 39, I rounded up. Thank you all. Thank you all for letting us have her for 38 years.
Thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
Yep. Name, name, take care of your grandma. Yeah, spend time with them.
Thank you.
Oh. Judy, 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 Judy.
Very good.
Hold us retired, we can have a retired luncheon everyone somewhere.
Call me, call me.
He can join his club. He can join his club.
I've been knowing for 31.
Yeah.
Hey, it was all right.
Good luck.
It is great that you don't have to make that drive every day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You forgot to say that she was going to stick around and do a little stuff for you until a permanent replacement comes on board. Judy's going to stick around and help Russell do some stuff, right, Russell?
Yes, sir.
For a little while, so she hasn't gone completely.
Win him off gradually.
She may decide to come back.
Thanks.
This thing needs some attention. Oh, I'm about to get it. Looky here. All right, I have a couple of proclamations to read. Let him get out of here, Judy. This first proclamation says that whereas the City of Missouri City Municipal Court is a time-honored and vital part of local government that has existed since 1956, which is the year we were incorporated, whereas the mission of the City of Missouri City Municipal Court system is to treat the citizens who appear in municipal court in a courteous and efficient manner and assure them of a fair, impartial, and timely disposition of their cases. And the municipal courts play a significant role in preserving the quality of life in Texas communities through the education adjunction of traffic offenses, ensuring a high level of traffic safety for our citizens. And whereas the municipal judges, court administrator, clerk, bailiffs, and warrant officers continually strive to improve the administration of justice through participation in judicial education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the 923 Texas municipal courts and salute their critical role in preserving public safety, protecting the quality of life in Texas communities, and deterring future criminal behavior. Now, therefore, that I, Allen Owen, Mayor, and on behalf of the city council and all the citizens of Missouri City do hereby recognize the week of November the 5th through the 9th, 2012, as Municipal Court Week in the City of Missouri City, Texas, and further extend appreciation to all of the City of Missouri City Municipal Court judges and court support personnel for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community. I call upon all the residents of the City of Missouri City to join with the city council in recognizing the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. Kathy, you going to come do this, our court administrator?
I just wanted to let you know that this week has been set aside to show the appreciation to the dedicated staff that we have in Missouri City. We have our judges, our court staff, our prosecutor, and our police department that furnishes our bailiff positions. So I invite you to come by and visit the court. We have a display out where we have handouts. One of the judges brought candy for us to give out this week, and I'll be happy to take you on a tour of the court facility, or answer any questions that you might have. So come by and see us, and we'll enjoy visiting with you. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the last proclamation, says that whereas the Humane Society of the United States designated the first week of November as National Animal Shelter and Rescue Appreciation Week, and whereas there are more than 73 million cats and 68 million dogs living in more than 63 million households across the United States, and whereas the irresponsibility of some pet owners has resulted in animals running loose and unsupervised, causing a threat to public health and to safety, and whereas indiscriminate breeding allowed by irresponsible pet owners who have not had their companion animals spayed or neutered has contributed to pet overpopulation, and whereas animal shelters help both animals and people in many ways by returning lost pets to their owners, enforcing animal control laws, rescuing injured animals, educating the public, and matching up families with new animal companions. Now, therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim November the 4th through the 10th, 2012, as National Animal Shelter Appreciation and Rescue Week in the City of Missouri City, Texas, and urge our citizens to adopt a new best friend and save the life of a homeless animal. So Sharon, you going to come accept this?
This National Animal Shelter Week is now including rescue services as well, and this was, this started about 16 years ago, and it's been very important for us to recognize, especially as we go from our older animal shelters, you see in the picture up here, with only about 800 square feet, to the brand-new one that's being built right now, which will be about 2,600 square feet. So one of the things that we recently kicked off just this past weekend was the mega adoption event for, throughout Fort Bend County. There were a total of 67 dogs and 26 cats, and all, I'm happy to say, all but 11 of the cats were adopted out. All the dogs were adopted out. Missouri City had some animals in the adoption event, and our dogs were gone within 30 minutes of the doors opening. They said there were people waiting in line and running to go look at all of the animals. So that's very positive, positive influence. But as we move into the new facility, it's important for the residents and citizens and anyone else that would like to come by and support the animal shelter. We'll be looking at new programs there, especially beeping up the adoption program. And we will be looking for volunteers. We're going to start looking at a volunteer program to help us operate the facility. And, of course, any other things like any trinkets, blankets, beds, and things like that are always welcome as well, and thank you.
Thank you.
This is great. I just adopted my third rescue dog, so...
Very good.
Like everyone should.
Well, and we need to remind people that they should register their dogs with the city. You can go down to the police station down there on Cartwright and 1092, and I believe it's a dollar for neutered and spayed animals, and $5, is it $5 if they're not?
Five if they're not.
Five if they're not. But the thing about that is by registering your animals with us and putting that tag on their collar, and let me encourage people, and I think Sharon will probably tell you, a large number of the pets that we pick up don't have collars on them, so we're not able to return them to their owners. But if they'll put a collar on them, and they'll put that tag on them, then we have that tag of record, and we can call those pet owners as quickly as we pick them up and can return those pets to them, and they don't have to go through the possibility of euthanasia by not being adopted or claimed. And, you know, that's not anything that any of us like to do, and, but it is something that, as is said in the proclamation, responsible pet owners need to take responsibility. We also have an ordinance in the City of Missouri City about vicious dogs. And let me remind people that if you have a vicious dog, and there are dogs that are declared vicious whether they've been out or not, you have to have liability insurance for that dog. And if that becomes an issue where we make a call to that residence and you don't have proof of insurance, it could be serious consequences in the courts for that. So I need to remind people of that because I know Sharon, and we all see those particular dogs, and unfortunately, pits are those breeds, one of those breeds that have been that way. And it used to be Dover ones, and then it was Rottweilers, and then it was Chows, and now it's pits. But we see a lot of those loose today, and I'm sure we end up with more of them in our pound than what we wish to have. And those, unfortunately, in most cases, are not adoptable. We do not, we do not adopt pits out to people for that reason.
We also see them loose with their owners, which we have a lease law including, they shouldn't take them to the park and let them run loose like we see happening sometime.
Yeah, you're right. And again, it gets back to responsible pet owners, and we've just got to make sure that we do that, so thank you for that. All right, item four, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address council on an item that is not an agenda item, but I can remind you that we cannot respond to the comments made on this item, and limit it to three. So Kevin, state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Piver, 11839 South Perry Avenue.
Kevin, if you wouldn't mind flipping that mic.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can't hear me.
Now that we got it fixed, there you go.
Houston, Texas, but we're in Missouri City.
Right.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, distinguished members of the council. I know about half of y'all, y'all know me. Two things. One is, hopefully, everybody's voted early. If you haven't voted early, be sure and go out and vote tomorrow. The other thing is, the construction on Texas Parkway. I make deliveries all day between Buffalo Run and, I think about James Street, they're still putting in all the new Esplanades. You've got three Mark patrol cars that are out there blocking traffic off. I make deliveries to the Stafford Park Plaza at 1,000 Texas Parkway. It used to be that I could turn off a Buffalo Run, come across the street, and get into their plaza. You can't do that anymore because of these Esplanades. You go all the way down to the next place where you could make a left or a U-turn, but there's a police car sitting there, so you got to go to the next one. Well, there's another police car there. I've got to go all the way down to Fifth Street, go through Stafford, and then come back down Texas Parkway so I can get into that shopping center and make my delivery. I talked to the owners over there today, and they told me that they've already talked to the city, and they said sometime in the next six to eight months, they're going to come in and cut out into that Esplanade. And I thought, why? If you're pouring a brand-new Esplanade to do traffic direction, are you going to come in there and cut brand-new concrete out just so people can get into the center? It really doesn't make any financial sense to me. The taxpayers are paying for it, they're going to pay for you to come out there and cut it and repour, just so you can access the center from the northbound traffic, turning back to the west.
Very good. I will make one comment that, you know, again, the patrol cars will be gone as soon as they're finished with it, which should be very quickly. But that's the State Highway Department. That's their project, and I know that there's some citizens that have had some concerns about it, and we'll address those that we can, but other than that, that's a Texas dot project.
Okay.
It's a state highway, and it's their project, so.
I was under the impression that was Missouri City project.
No, it's state highway. Texas Parkway, 2034...
Six.
Is a state highway. So that's a project that we're sharing some cost in, but it is a Texas dot project, one that they authorized, one that they designed. All right?
Complete with all the, you can't come to this shopping center if you're heading northbound.
Yep, part of the design.
Thanks.
All right. All right. Item five, our staff reports. Item 5A is report regarding the Veterans Memorial Project. Who has that?
We don't have a Veterans Memorial Project. And we haven't approved any such project.
Just advance it. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. What I'd like to bring to you tonight is just a report on where we are to this point with the Veterans Memorial. I'm sure you've all heard some, that there's, has been some meetings and discussion on a memorial to honor veterans.
Before you get started, can we clarify a couple of points, though?
Sure.
One is, this council has not approved or directed a Veterans Memorial. So you're bringing us a proposal, I assume.
It's just a report, I'm not...
But you report, but it leads way to make people think we have approved, I'm not against it, but we haven't approved anything.
Correct.
And it makes it look like you're reporting on something we have approved.
But can I, can I ask something, too? I thought we had, Ed, I thought we had a committee or some sort of, something that was formed to talk about this.
There's a committee of the, a committee of the parks board that Larry will kind of brief on where they are and their discussions on this project.
Is that what this is?
Support was made known to the park board about a Veterans Memorial a while back. With direction from the park board and two park board members on the committee, along with Don Smith, Scott Mosley, Emmanuel Barnes, park board member, Andrew Kayes, Matt Rios, veteran and a member of the fire department, and then myself and Randy Troxel, met a few different times to discuss what, how we would go forward with the Veterans Memorial. Some of the role, the role of the committee was to maybe determine a location, develop some design ideas, and discuss fundraising. The committee actually got in a van, drove around several parks, tried to look for the best, what we thought were the best locations for the memorial. The two top locations that the committee liked were American Legion Park and Community Just a little bit about American Legion Park. It's widely used for fishing. The area just east of the gravel parking is about 1.2 acres. That would be the only spot that a potential memorial could fit. There's the gravel parking there, it's only room for 30 cars right now. There are no restrooms. An additional electrical needed. The only electrical going into the park powers the two fountains that is used for oxygenation of the lake. So there's obviously some infrastructure issues with that park. Community Park, it's got sports fields, half-mile trail, restroom, security lighting, paved, parking of 600 spaces, and if we, in a pinch, you can fit another 225 cars in some grass The areas we specifically looked at for a potential memorial was the outlined area, like I said, just east of the gravel parking, and that's 1.173 acres, I believe. Community Park, the specific area the committee liked was as you go down Glenn Lakes Lane and approach that little triangle seemed well suited for a memorial, and that is about And the location decision from the committee was Community Park, based on a few different things. The belief is that the memorial that honors veterans deserves placement in a highly visible park.
So what does that mean? And don't get me wrong, I'm not against the idea of honoring our veterans, but I would like to know, what does that mean?
What that means if it were up to the committee, the memorial would go in Community Park.
Now, what is the memorial?
It's a Veterans Memorial.
What it consists of?
Right now, it's in concept only.
And that's my, that's my point. You're bringing something here with an assumption that we've already approved it, which is not the, not, let me finish, which is not, not the case. What I'm saying is, if it's something we want to do, we ought to say that's what we want to do, and then somebody needs to develop and come back with a request that this is what wants to be done. Who going to be the veterans? What kind of memorial is it going to be? Are we talking World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, you know? How's this thing going to work? And that, we haven't gotten any input on, and I don't have a problem as long as I know what it is that I'm doing.
Let me, let me ask, in light of the subject, you know, having some sort of memorial to honor those who've fought for our freedom, it seems that most progressive cities have found some way of doing that.
Not against it.
Let me finish, and we, let's be courteous as well. So this is a concept. This is a concept. And we want to move with great zeal to make sure that this comes to fruition, unless there are some on council who are saying that they don't approach, that they don't support this thing. Now, from all indications I've gotten, as my colleagues on council said, that they would support a Veterans Memorial. Am I wrong in assuming that, or have I not?
No, you're not wrong in assuming that.
Okay, so as...
Listen, that's what I'm saying. I'm just talking about the order of the process. Put it on agenda, let council approve it, they have direction, they got an idea of what is wanted, and come back and present it to us for final approval. Right now, we're talking about something that, you know, I know there was some mention of it, but nothing official has taken place.
Let me finish, Jerry. Give me, my greatest fear is you're going to interrupt me before I finish my thought. Where we are right now, it is a concept. What we attempting to do now is to present to the council, a report that states that we are moving forward, we're trying to come up with this concept to present to council. What we asking you to do is accept this concept in good faith and let us move on with the business. We want to, but here the protocol, we will do that. We will do that. But we're getting a read and to try to, try to see if us moving forward is acceptable through council. That's all. We're just a nod, just a friendly, just a friendly...
Well, let me, let me back up again. Let me back up again, Don, one more time. What we have on here is report regarding the Veterans Memorial Project. If I was sitting out there in that audience, I'd assume the council has already approved this, okay? I'm not against the project. What we need to do is get it in the order that it needs to be so it can be taken care of. That's all I'm saying.
So noted. So, as it stands right now, do you feel comfortable with moving forward to try to bring it to council in the proper order?
Now, I feel comfortable putting it on the agenda and ask council whether they approve having a Veterans Memorial. I don't care what it look like, that'd have to all be designed, but we need to prove that that's what we want to do.
Larry, you see where we are with this?
Councilman Smith, let me ask something. Along the lines, I think we had talked about this almost a year ago, if I'm not mistaken, and it's been in the thing. And apparently, according to this report, there's about four or five members along with two staff members. So, all of this is done already. So, all I'm saying is, to say now, where are we with this thing? I mean, that's like, we spent so much hours and time of staff and committee.
Exactly.
So, where, I don't understand, why are we?
Why are we doing it? Because council has not taken any formal action to authorize doing this or any expenditure. We have to take formal action.
Councilman Wyatt, there have been several times that this council had talked about ideas without action. Item agenda, so please. And then I don't, I don't think we, I possibly have an objection to this. And this may be the first time you hear the concept. But with respect to Councilman Smith, who was a veteran, who is a veteran, and he has, he must have spoken to several people, including veterans and citizens, to come up with this idea. Please, can you please, I mean...
No, I'm interrupting so long.
So, can you please let us hear the idea openly? Because we are not making any action today. And with respect for the veterans and for Councilman Smith and for the committee, can we hear it?
The only point that I'm making is that, as long as we're aware, the council has not taken action. That's the only way that this can happen. We are legally bound to take action to make this happen. And I object to the fact, the way this is being presented, because it's with the presumption that we've already done something.
I have a different question. Who appointed the committee?
The Park Board suggested, based on the fact that it was presented to a Park Board meeting, that a committee be formed. Chairman Lawrence Turner asked for Park Board volunteers. There were two. And Scott Mosley, who he was, made one of the presentations to council about it, was obviously a choice to be on it. And...
This, 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 this project has been discussed ongoing.
It has been, Don, but the question I ask is relevant here because it goes back to what Jerry's point is. I don't think any of us, including myself, are very much in favor of this. But I was not aware until you read the names out tonight of this committee, and I, as mayor of this city, appoint committees. And I had no earthly idea who this committee people were or what, or how the choice went about to do it. Now, you're telling me that the Parks Board did it. It goes back to Jerry. This committee has never even been approved by this council as other committees have. And we need to do that so we can move forward with it. You know, I'm very much in favor of us doing it, but I want us to do it in the proper way that we're supposed to do it and to make sure, again, I had no earthly idea. Don, I've talked about this for a long time. But I had no earthly idea who the members of this committee were. Not all those people are Parks Board people.
Correct. And if I erred in any type of protocol, that's my fault. I apologize for that.
Yeah, see, we didn't...
Oh, you're trying to, you're trying in now. This is where we are, this is where we are right now with this.
He didn't know there was a committee.
Bobby, don't be sensitive. Just sit back and listen to what's going on. That's all you got to do.
I just stating the fact that I didn't know we had a committee. And I'm sitting here listening, but don't, don't worry about my house.
Just sit back and listen, and when, when, somebody gonna tell you when to time in on this?
No, no, go about it formally, or let's not go about it.
Because you're a member of this committee doesn't mean that you have any more right to talk about this than anybody else.
I have, I'm gonna tell you the truth. But the thing is, is we're gonna, we're gonna come to some decision as to how we're gonna do it, and we're gonna do it in the right protocol.
And you, as a member of the committee, are just gonna do it without any input?
Something else is bugging you, Bobby.
No, I just asked the mayor this simple question. Five minutes ago, when was this committee formed?
This is where we are. Why don't we just?
So, you were appointed to a committee, and we didn't even know about it.
Now, now, let's, okay, now, if you want to come up, if you want to do some debating, let's do it. Now, how do you want to do, how do you want to take this out?
Let me just stop it right here. I want the committee approved before we go forward with it. That's what I want.
And I'm all for that.
Yeah, get the committee approved so we can move about it in the right way.
And that's what I was about to say. And let's adhere to the protocol so we can, all this discussion...
Exactly.
Well, I think if we approve a committee, we need to be authorizing them to do this.
Exactly.
That's all I'm saying.
And the other thing I would like to say is, I would like to commend Councilman Wyatt for bringing that out, that we should adhere to protocol. And that's one thing that I think council should always do.
Yeah, because that, that makes it formal. It takes the pressure off the Parks Board. It gives you all the authority to have an authorized committee to move forward and make recommendations. Again, I don't think there is anybody on this council has any problem with us doing it. We have talked about it for a year. But it needs to be done right.
So, I guess the question I have for you, Ed, is how did this committee come to form?
It's a committee of the Parks Board. The Parks Board, in looking at this task, said they wanted a separate group to, almost a subcommittee, so to speak, probably maybe a more accurate term for them, to look at this issue. So, the members you see, the Scott Mosley, I'm gonna flip you back here to the Parks. So, Scott Mosley, Emmanuel Barnes, Andrew Kayes, Matt Rios, those were people that the Parks Board asked to, to look at this issue and come back to them.
So, what is appropriate right now?
From what I'm hearing, if I may, sir. From what I'm hearing is, council wants to see, as far as an actual committee of the council, instead of a committee of the Parks Board, created to continue to investigate and look at this issue.
And is this all, I mean, there are other veterans out there that might want to be a part of this committee.
One of the things to think about as well is, how will this be funded? This is, right now, that's not even a case of the concept, so...
That's gotta come to us, and that's why the committee needs to make its recommendations to council, because we're the ones that gotta pay for it.
Or, if, how much fundraising do you want to see happen? So, maybe appointing people as well that have the ability to reach out and to do fundraising may be a part of the thing to think about.
And I think that's probably the route that we're gonna take long-term is getting, is getting participation from corporate, just like we did for the protector statue in front of the police station. That was $150,000 project. And it was done through selling of the pavers and corporate contributors. The city ended up paying a fairly substantial amount of money because we didn't raise enough money totally to do the project and to end up funding the rest of it, which was fine. It's a great statue. I think that there is enough interest out there from organizations to help us fund this thing, but it needs to, it needs to have some organization to it that has some authority, some definition, to give you all the authority to move forward. Otherwise, you're doing a lot of work. You're gonna get up here, and somebody's gonna say, well, why did you get that far before you even came to council and got approval for the committee and the recommendations? So, that's my recommendation, Don, is that we formally appoint that committee as a standing committee. If there are other people out there in the, in the city that, that feel committed to want it, we've got some VFW people out there. Because I guarantee you, when we go to do this project, we're gonna need everybody knocking on doors to raise the money to do it because the city doesn't have the funds to do it.
And let me make one other clarification. The Parks Board does not have the authority to create other committees, whether it's this one or any other. Now, that doesn't mean they can't get volunteers to help them do things, but they don't have the authority to do that.
And that's what we need to do formally for them.
Okay, who's, who, what's the next step, Mayor? Are you going to?
I would say that at this next meeting, we need to put an item on the agenda to create this committee and let council approve the creation of that committee and what its purpose is.
But in the defense of the Parks Board, they really was trying to move this thing.
I understand, and I don't mean that in a mayor's thing.
No, there's no blame being played. Let's just, we need to do it where it's legal.
I understand.
My concern.
Yeah, bottom line...
The lady's shaking her head. She knows what I'm talking about.
It comes back to us, the legal part.
Yes, it does. So, I would say, let's put it on the agenda. Let's appoint the board members, Lawrence, that, that you all are recommending, and anybody else, and between now and the next board meeting that has an interest in it. And then you all go forward with your recommendations based on a committee that's authorized.
Sounds good to me, yeah.
Good. And I think we all want it. And I appreciate the work that, that the committee's done in going and looking at these sites. You're probably right. Those are the only two sites in the city right now, unless we find somebody that might want to donate some land or something.
As a matter of fact, one of the possibilities is to talk to the shopping center's owners who have a large parking lot. They, they may donate that portion to have the statue built. I've seen it before, seen it done before.
And there may be some other areas that we may look at along the tow road or somewhere that's better than that, so, all right.
Ed, I have one question on this. So, are we going to go back and let this committee go?
Well, what I heard is to bring, to look at these people coming back, but as well as other members as well.
Yes.
So, these people will still be involved that were listed on there before.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a good group, Eric.
Oh, it is a good group, and they're all veterans. Scott's a former council person and...
Oh, yes, indeed.
Died in the Wool Marine, and, and they're good guys. And I think they've got the right idea and the route to go. We just need to...
Formalize it.
Formalize it so they can.
Okay, will do.
And Don's a veteran. He can chair that committee. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Item six is a consent agenda. Your motion to approve the consent agenda is written. Who said that, sir? Mayor Protem Wyatt made the motion. Who made the second?
I did.
I didn't hear you.
He made, Councilman, I mean, Protem Wyatt made the motion, and Councilman Emery made the second. If I heard right. All those in favor, motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. Seven A is a zoning public hearing. There are none. Item seven B is a public hearing related action. And it is a public hearing to consider, is this, you, you, have you got an ordinance? Or you got a reading, yes?
A resolution. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, determining that no change is needed to the northeast Oyster Creek sub watershed land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, or impact fee, making certain findings and providing for severability.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, the city initiated the northeast Oyster Creek watershed project in early 1990s, believe 1991. At that time, we established an impact fee to help recoup the costs for the drainage improvements in northeast Oyster Creek. What is interesting is, there is also an overlapping impact fee by Fort Ben County in this watershed. Northeast Oyster Creek is a sub watershed of the Oyster Creek watershed. The city has completed all construction on the project. It's been completed since the early, well, the late 1990s on that. And so, as every five years, we have to go through, make sure all the land use assumption is correct, that all, that nothing has really changed, and the impact fee is still warranted and is still being applied fairly on that. The analysis we conducted said that to recoup costs with the remaining property fully, it'd be about $5,333 per acre of developed land that gets platted out there. The Fort Ben County impact fee is approaching $7,000 per acre, and it goes up $16 a month, every month on that. Historically, the city has never asked for the entire cost of the impact fee. We did not want to discourage development along that area with a, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 impact fee per acre prior to even being developed, anything being built. Staff recommendation is that we stay with the current impact fee of $3,000 per acre with the overlapping Fort Ben County impact fee. And that's our recommendation for consideration.
Vote to that. Now, is this part of the lake that goes through the north?
Brightwater?
No, no, the one, the one in Quail Valley. You know, the northeast, this watershed goes through the lake on the...
Yeah.
The northeast, the Oyster Creek watershed includes all those lakes. The red that you see on the screen is the boundaries of the northeast Oyster Creek watershed. And it stops north of Cartwright Road and on the west side of FM 1092 on that. Though the water does ultimately drain in that direction, in some areas.
So, so is the impact being corrected there?
Impact fee is being collected in undeveloped land that is inside the red boundaries. Yes, sir.
But south of Cartwright?
Only the Fort Ben County. The only portion south of Cartwright that is included in the impact fee area is the shopping center that the police station is in. Everything else is north of Cartwright. And that area was actually established as developed when the impact fee was adopted. So, it was, it was grandfathered, and it did not have a pay. Now, if they would replat or something like that, then they would be subject to it.
Does it go all the way up to Independence Park?
It goes all, through American Legion Park.
And American Legion.
Yes, sir. In fact, the improvements in American Legion, when we doubled the size of the lake, that was done with funding from CIP and recoup for this impact fee. And it goes to the city limits on the north side, basically the GCWA canal.
Okay. Very good. There was a motion by Mayor Protem Wyatt and a second by Councilman Marshall. If there's no other discussion, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Item eight, appointments, this, and see, Don, this is where that committee will fall in. To consider appointments to the Bond Exploratory Committee.
Mayor and council, you had before you, as far as the names of, that were considered for the Bond Exploratory Committee. We're looking to get this group started in January, as far as with the holidays, kind of keeping that in mind. And it was one to where, bear with me, I think it was, you looked at a point about 25 members. You've already appointed, how many members have they appointed? Nine members so far. The rest are, as far as what you have, the 25 is not set in stone. The council has just said more so than many.
And those that we had appointed earlier were sent letters asking if they wanted to remain on in spite of the fact that we were gonna stretch it out?
Yes, and everybody who's...
And all of them agreed?
Everybody who's listed on the cover memo has been contacted, and they have, they have been advised of the new structure.
Okay.
And they all agreed to remain on the committee should council appoint them.
All right, so we need 16 more people?
Well, only based on the fact that a couple of our council members submitted more names than was requested. I would like to include our online submittal. One person to my list.
Okay. Who is that?
I'm Ada Rodriguez.
Actually, for clarification, I did recommend four people. I would only be naming three if I did it, even though that fourth person would make it because they would be on another council person. And, and, so do we need to name these, or do we?
Did you have one that you're saying that was on, that another council member covers?
Yeah, I'm gonna be taking one of the people off of my list and adding Mayor Protem Wyatt's name.
Staff's recommendation, if y'all are, if y'all are good with this, is to appoint the full list.
Yeah, and then Bobby's got one that was not on the original list that you want to add?
But she's on their list, but she was on the original-
Okay, just waiting to make sure she's on there.
Preliminary list that we did not appoint because she was online, and she did a personal submittal.
Okay.
Ed, to make a clarification to what City Secretary had said, nine, I counted eleven that's previously appointed?
It's the ex officio board members, two ex officio board members were appointed during the September 17 meeting.
Yeah. So, you still need people to, some names submitted to you?
I think y'all have got, I mean, are you, I guess my question would be, if you're comfortable with this list, I just, I would appoint everyone you have here.
Well, we are, but I'm just saying, if we want to go to 25, are you opening that up for future appointees to this committee to come back at a later time and add them?
Would I just count it up real quick? I had 33, and then you minus the five ex officio members, that gets you to-
We've got more than 25 on our list today.
So.
Alright, Lawrence, you got that?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
But let's get some clarification here. Are we saying everybody on this list we're going to appoint?
That's my recommendation, unless council feels that there's some people on there that they'd like to just-
We had some discussion, we said that if people served on other committees, we weren't going to appoint them?
That's all right.
So, are we foregoing that? I just don't know what we're doing.
That's what I would suggest.
I mean, it wouldn't mind to meet one way or the other.
That's, that's a council rule, and so if council wants to, to follow that, or waive it, that is, that is the option of council.
I don't care.
Who were you thinking of pulling? Rob?
What?
You said you were pulling one of them.
I mean, if the, if the, if the council, as, you know, as a unit decides to take or keep only people that's new and not anyone that's serving out of the committee, if that's the case, if that's what I'm hearing tonight, I would like to remove one person out of mine.
You have to move two.
I need a hand. Not serving on any of the board, not here.
Can you see him?
Well, that's-
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, I was going to take one person out of mine, and then-
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith, I mean Wyatt has a member that I was going to put it onto mine. If, if so, that's what the council-
Who's in his district?
Who's in my district, correct.
Alright.
One, one of the things I like to mention, Mayor, is that we, we have some people on this list that serve on other committees who really understand what the city is all about. We had the same discussion when we did the Board of Adjustments, and it was a point well taken that you wanted someone who really, who understood, and I think that can hold true for this as well.
We got to have people that are, you know, knock on doors-
Yeah.
-later on and sell this deal-
Yeah.
-to the citizens and be known to the citizens, have some bit of, I guess, respect from the citizens in that when we're, when they're making those calls, that they do know that. I don't have a problem, I don't care how many people we have, it's going to be a sales job when we do it.
Matter of clarification, when we said that we were going to exclude individuals that are committee members now, or board members now, was that just from the recommendations that we made, or was it also for the ex officio members?
Now, the ex officio members were board members. That's the reason that you had, you essentially took, you took voting authority away from them, but they have the ability to kind of talk about the different projects that are going on within their respective boards or commissions.
Exactly.
So, they're there to give insight and advice to the, the full committee.
Are you saying they wouldn't carry, their recommendations or, or suggestions wouldn't have the same weight as someone on the committee that I recommended? I mean, where's, I'm not sure I understand this distinction.
The ex officio is, well, the ex officio, as far as just in all the discussions we had, were going to be non-voting members, but it was going to be the board and commission members that currently exist.
I missed the non-voting piece of it.
Now, we have, we have one ex officio member here, I don't, I don't know what he's on. That's David Hammer, maybe somebody can enlighten me.
Terrace Board, I believe, is-
That the Terrace Board?
Yeah.
His service.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Two from P&amp;Z, two from Parks Board, and Terrace Board.
Is it on the CDVJ, is that considered?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
We, I'm inclined to go along with what the, I'm inclined to go along with what the mayor said, we're going to need someone out here. When I recommended someone for this board, I, I kind of put the topic of a stakeholder, city stakeholder, someone who-
Yeah.
-who's interested in the city, who knows something about it, and is able to communicate influence in some degree, influence the, and persuade. And as I look at this, I still, I still see that. I still see that under this. To, to dilute that is going to be some heavy work for somebody that we have to, to sell this bond referendum. We, we need, we need allies out there. We need folks out there.
Well, there's one then that I would, there's a person that, speaking of that, that I would add to the list, and I don't know if he'll serve, but it comes kind of what you said, and that's Pastor Remus Wright. And if we can get churches involved in a bond issue in any way, and, and Pastor Wright lives in Riverstone, so he is a resident of Missouri City, he could kind of represent the Fort Ben Ministers Association, because that's a very powerful group of people and influential people, so if he'll serve. Now, I don't know if he'll serve, but I would like to contact him and ask him if he would.
Well, we can always, we can always add to the list, but, but, but I too believe there ought to be people on here who people look up to, and if they say that I'm for this bond issue, you know, for some people, that's going to be enough, and I don't think we have that with this list, and, and-
Other people out there.
You mean, we need more, Terry, or you, we, just to-
Well, I, I just don't, I mean, there are some people, I tried to, when I went out to look for people, I tried to look for people that other people would say, boy, if he's for it, then it's probably a good deal. I mean, that's the first inclination that you want to have with somebody to represent and looking at these bonds, but also somebody on there that's reasonable enough to make decision as to, okay, is the city asking for something reasonable, or are they out of their mind, or are they asking for too much, or are they not asking for something that we need? And so, I, you know, so, that's why I was asking for the clarification. I, I really don't care who's on this list, as long as we get the right combination of people on there.
So, so what are we going with?
Well, this is a decision that we have to make, but I don't, I don't.
I mean, you know, I just feel like here we go again. We had almost two, two months, several meetings of these discussions in the back where we talked about these members. We come up with it, we made rules after rules of who should be and who should not be. Now we're going back and saying that we probably feel like people that's going to represent is not on this list, which this was the same exact list that we talked about over a month ago. So, I, I'm a bit confused as to what's not on this list that should be on this list that we didn't see it a month ago. I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Can we go over an executive session on this? We can.
We didn't post it. You know, if we want to, if we want to appoint these people, and then at a later date, talk about, you know, changing the makeup or adding people to, again, I don't care. You just need to make sure we've got salesmen, and you know, do we have HOAs represented, Act of the Child, and organizations that'll be pushing it out there, and I hope those are the people we picked.
Yeah, and that's exactly why, why I said that, because I think each council member was given some sort of idea and, and as to what we're trying to do and what we're trying to establish, and I think all of us went back and, you know, wore our think outside of the box hat and kind of came up with people that would represent us, would make it easier for our districts. I think that's what we have. I mean, I don't see any problematic-
And I think we've got a great group of people, I just, you know.
And as we go, as we go through this process, remember, there will be opportunities for open houses, or for, to invite, especially if some people that you know are interested in parks, when we discuss parks one night, or facilities, or whatever it is, to say, hey, this is an opportunity, please come and listen, and, you know, kind of give feedback as, as that opportunity is there. These are really open meetings, so there is that as well.
Sure.
Well, let me clarify my, my comment, which I made here at the beginning, and that is that I, I contacted these four people. They're from four different areas of my district, four different neighborhoods, two different counties. They are well respected by their, their neighbors, their peers, and I picked these people for a reason. And my comment was, is that an additional person submitted their request to be on this committee, who I also think is perfectly qualified to be on this committee, and my comment is, if we are going to stick with 25, in our strict accordance with what the rules we put in, I'm happy with my first four decisions. All I'm saying is, if we are going to adjust that in any way, add one or two here, there, and so forth, that I think she is a good candidate for them.
I thought she was in the list. She's not being counted as-
She's not on lines of middle.
Huh?
She wasn't on lines of middle.
Okay.
So, but she's in District A, and I-
She's not in the 25?
No, she's not.
We're talking about.
She was not, she wasn't included in the, in the first round of applicant staff-
And I don't have a problem with her, I think she's a great candidate for it. Remus Wright wasn't either, that's why I'm adding him.
And that, that was my comment, is that she's a good candidate to add to this.
Absolutely.
And so, so based on this, we're going to appoint everybody on this list?
Unless we pull people off.
Essentially, that's what, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, these people will do what's right.
Exactly. We're going to put everybody on that list, including Amaya and Remus Wright if he wants to. If he doesn't, I don't, you know, I'll come back with something else. But, yeah.
Well, then I make the motion, we approve this entire list, including Remus Wright.
Second. Alright, Councilman Marshall made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. What was the name? Okay, I didn't hear.
How many we got?
That'd be 27.
Including Remus?
Yeah. If you had 25 plus his, it's 26, it might be 27, is that right?
Or did we already have more?
Is everybody on this list plus two?
As far as official accounting, we, we shall do later.
Is everybody on this list plus two?
Plus one.
Oh, damn it.
Amato was already on the list.
Alright, everybody, we're just-
Twenty-eight.
Alright, all those in favor, motion carries. Item nine, 9A is authorization to consider authorizing execution of an agreement for engineering services for the Willa Waterhole Drainage Analysis.
Mayor and Council, with the approval of the Consulting Selection Committee, we shortlisted firms to perform a master drainage plan update for the Willa Waterhole. Willa Waterhole Master Drainage Plan is the area north of 98, and there are industrial park. The master drainage plan we've been working on was first started in the mid 80s and has been piecemealed together since then, and it's time for us to do a comprehensive update while we have a lot of development going on to maximize the amount of developable land out there. Based upon the shortlist, we recommend to city councils that we use LAN, Lockwoods, Andrew, and Noonan for the work. We've negotiated a contract between engineering and purchasing with LAN for $109,410. This was originally funded in the CIP budget for $140,000. The work will take approximately five months to complete.
Alright, their motion?
So move.
Question.
Now, does this include the detention?
This would include looking at the entire Willa Waterhole watershed, which is Fondem Park, north of South Gardens, north of 98, and it would look, we have an existing regional detention facility that still has expansion room, and to see if we need any additional detention on top of that. It will also take a look at what's called Subwatershed C, which is the area between Cravens and Beltway, north of 98, that was originally moved out of that watershed with the construction of the Beltway 8, 98 crossing out there, to see if it's more feasible to keep it in the Canjulosi ditch, or bring it back into Willa Waterhole.
So, are we looking at any flows from Stafford?
Yes, it does include flows from Stafford in there, yes, sir.
Is Stafford participating?
Stafford has not indicated willingness to participate at this time, however, we will be coordinating with them, and of course, if whatever recommendation it comes, comes forth, we would look at-
So, what happens-
Asking for cost participation.
So, what happens if we identify additional flows from Stafford beyond what was originally allowed?
I'm, I'm sorry, I left my hearing aids at home today, can you repeat that?
Well, you know I don't talk real loud, you know. What happens if we identify updated flows from Stafford, which would be beyond what was originally?
That is one of the things that we really want to look at as part of this. Some of the preliminary drainage studies done for individual developments may indicate that there are flows being received from Stafford that are in excess of what the original mid 80s plan called for, and that is one of the items that we wanted to take a look at in this. If we do identify that, if that is an actuality, then we would have to approach Stafford about that.
And this is not to put you on the spot, this is to put it on record.
Yeah.
Because we've had drainage issues with Stafford.
That is correct.
Well, I hope what they're doing by buying-
This won't help that.
-the track of land will help some of that.
If you're talking about the Regal Ranch, that was actually in the Stafford Run watershed.
And this won't help.
That should help out on Stafford Run.
Yeah.
But this would be the area by the Stafford Center and the area off Stafford Road, and that area that we're receiving into Willa Waterhole.
Scott, how does all the dirt that's being added between Cravens and the Beltway?
That dirt's part of the, the contractor for the Harris County toll road construction is actually spoiling some of the dirt on that property. He did get a grading permit. It is not, he, he's still keeping the flows in the direction they're going, it's just not adding any increased imperviousness. It should not have a big impact at this time.
You know, that brings up an interesting point when you bring dirt. It appeared that either they land some new track, or they land another track down, but it's just a track.
Oh, they only, they are. No, they're double tracking.
Is this, does this affect the flows in that area?
It, in Missouri City, the flows for that Subwatershed C goes under a ditch, Tex Dock dug under 98 and goes to Canjulosi. There was a drainage easement in the pass that went along the north side of the railroad track, but that drainage easement was pretty much only to drain the railroad, and that should not be affected.
Okay.
Alright, been a motion and a second, all those in favor, motion carries. Item 9B is consider authorizing award of a contract to pavement, for pavement evaluation services.
Mayor and Council, I understand last council meeting, you had an update or a presentation on what the pavement management program was, so this, this services will be done to support that program. The benefits of this pavement evaluation include GASB 34 compliance, value-added components to meet city's missions and goals, excuse me, pavement data collection, processing, database upload into our current system, which is Cartograph, and a condition index analysis, and right away, excuse me, right away digital image, imaging, I'm sorry, I have a cold, and, and a health check on our current system to help to get us back into the optimal assessments and budgeting and forecasting. Now, the, the services were, the RSQ was put out about a little over a year and a half ago. At that time, we thought we were ready to do the pavement management condition rating, but we had something, a little something came on that was called a drought, so we decided to wait to see how that was going to settle out, and so we're, we're at the point now that we think that the street network is now ready to be evaluated, and that we would get a true representation of what it actually, what the actual conditions are. The engineering firm that we have been negotiating with has been very patient with us, and so they, we've actually negotiated them down from about $145,000 to the current amount, which is $118,490. So, it is staff's recommendation to go ahead and award to a few grow consultants to perform the pavement management evaluation services.
Move to- Their motion? Mayor Protem Wyatt made a motion, they're second.
Sorry.
Councilman Marshall made the second. Is there any other discussion?
We get a chance to get what we don't want to know.
I'm sorry?
I said, we get a chance to get what we don't want to know, the condition of the streets.
Yes. We do, and as, as a matter of practice to, yes, we will, we're going to know the true condition after this recent, yes.
Got to know it.
Okay. Did we vote?
No.
Motion and second, let's vote. Could I entertain a motion that we suspend rules and take items C through H before we get to A and B? I know we've got people here from, that are concerned about those issues, and these other two items may be long, so. Councilman Wyatt made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second. Alright, we'll take item 10C.
We got to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Motion carries, 10C.
I ask a quick question before we do this.
Yeah.
That is why these are different ordinances, I think.
That is required as a-
Good question, why this-
So, we do an agreement with each company, it'll be the same agreement we'll do with each company for the term of two years, for the next two years.
And it's appropriate to have it as a separate ordinance for each one of these?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because you're having a separate agreement with each-
Only, Greg, these are the only times that I, in my entire history, have ever seen a three-reading ordinance.
This is a franchise. This is our franchise. It's our charter.
Very uncommon that you have three reading ordinances, so we'll be dealing with these three different meetings.
Okay. Mayor and Council, we've been through several iterations.
To read it.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If I may read the caption. An ordinance granting to BFI Waste Services of Texas LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership, DBA Republic Services of Houston, the right, privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty and providing for severability.
And I'll cover, all of the residential agreements are the same. And let me cover the fact that these are non-exclusive residential agreements. They are with Dependable Disposable Services, Republic Services, VF Waste Services, Waste Management of Texas Incorporated, WCA Waste Corporation. They, the city would be granting them the use of our rights of way for conducting their business. And for that, we would be charging five percent of the gross receipts received by the company for operation. The agreement would be from February first, two thousand thirteen, remain in force through December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. At that time, we would then put it back out for bid, that's when our current city contract expires. Number five, we would have them following certain service level standards, inspection requirements that are set forth by the state to make sure that their equipment is all in operations according to those standards. They will be required to display their name, their contact information, and also maintain their fleet in good working order while operating within the city. And then we also require them, as we do now, and we will watch very closely the solid waste that they carry throughout the city or pick up and carry throughout the city, is properly enclosed to prevent blowing, spillage or leakage. We also will require reporting. They will be required to report to us total volumes of collected tonnage. They make up the material that they collect, the cause, and then also if there are service issues, the cause of service issues. The city reserves the right to audit their records throughout the term of the contract. We will also, in order to make sure that we know who is operating and properly operating within the city, require vehicle decalling that the city will provide to them. And they will provide us a list of all vehicles and equipment they will be using, making sure that they're, again, maintained in proper order. And they'll provide us with the make, model, VIN, license plate number for each vehicle within the city operating. And we reserve the right to inspect the vehicles as needed. And we will check their fleet to make sure that they're staying within those guidelines. And finally, the decals that would be provided with the licensing will be through a decal that is non-transferable. Be happy to answer any questions you have, and the next five items are the residential agreements. Yes, sir?
Is there a method of certifying the total volume, tons that's collected? How do you just?
They will provide us with the tickets, and verification as to what they pick up within our city, and report that to us on a monthly basis.
But the tonnage can be verified from the dump receipts, because they have to do that for TECQ.
And as I?
Yeah, okay.
All right, is there a motion? Is there a motion, Ms. Smith? Do we have to do each one?
Yeah, most of the doubt. What is, I thought we were.
Yeah, we got, no, we just did the motion to suspend the rules, now we're doing the motion to approve the ordinance.
I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, is that your second, Mr. Emery?
Yes.
My question, do we have to do each one?
Yep.
Yes, sir, they're separate, they're separate.
You have to read them, we don't have to go through Bill's explanation on each one.
Right now, we're on ten C.
What department comes?
I'm sorry, what?
Department of this coming, who does the checking of decals and all of that?
I, well, I'm over this, and I work closely with Millie Halliffel and with Ryan Stoltz.
Okay. So you got three people?
Yes, sir.
And I guess from an enforcement standpoint, our patrol officers on the street will monitor the decals or can monitor the decals.
Police code enforcement, the primary one is going to be, which pretty much most cities have found, is going to be the haulers.
Yeah.
Because once they notice that there's somebody that's operating without a decal.
Won't tell on each other.
Oh, they wouldn't do that, would they?
They're gonna tell on each other.
I see, okay. All right, we do have representatives here from Republican, if you want to say something, you can, otherwise just stay quiet.
Is that Dave Mills there, right there?
Yeah, my teammate there. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. All right, read ten D.
An ordinance granting to Dependable Disposable Service LLC, a Texas limited liability company, the right, privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection services business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty and providing for severability.
Move, approve, second.
Been a motion and a second, is anyone here from Dependable that wants to speak? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, motion carries. Ten E.
An ordinance granting to VF Waste Services, Inc., a Texas corporation, the right, privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty and providing for severability.
Is there a motion?
Most of the doubt.
Councilman Smith made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. Anyone here from VF? Not, we'll vote, all those in favor, motion carries. Ten F.
An ordinance granting to Waste Management of Texas, Inc., a Texas corporation, the right, privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty and providing for severability.
Is there a motion?
Move to doubt, second.
Councilman Smith made the motion, Councilor Marshall made the second. Anyone here from Waste Management? Not, we'll vote, all those in favor, motion carries. Ten G.
An ordinance granting to WCA Waste Corporation, a Delaware corporation, the right, privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty and providing for severability.
Move, approve, second.
Councilor Marshall made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. Anyone here from WCA? Not, we'll vote, all those in favor, motion carries, and then ten H.
An ordinance granting to BFI Waste Services of Texas LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership, DBA Republic Services of Houston, the right, privilege and franchise to use the public rights of way to conduct a solid waste collection service business for commercial customers within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty and providing for severability.
I do want to point one thing out, this is an exclusive agreement, which we have discussed before.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilor Marshall made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. Sure you don't want to say anything? I don't think so.
Let me, that's a question. Will the same trucks be using, or that you use for residential also be used for commercial?
Oh, no.
Okay, will there be a identification?
Yes, sir.
Tag on those?
Same standards will apply to the commercial as did the residential. Again, the only thing different is exclusivity.
Okay.
And when we talk commercial, we simply talking lift-up dumpsters, front-end dumpsters? We're not talking roll-offs? Okay.
All right, been a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, I got to just be back two more times. All right, we'll go back to the regular agenda and ten A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City amending chapter eighty-six utilities of the Missouri City Code, providing regulations for the discharge of industrial waste to the sanitary sewers and to the city's publicly-owned treatment works, regulating wastewater and miscellaneous discharges, providing for a permit system for discharge of industrial waste into sanitary sewers, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Move to doubt.
And this is the first of two readings, so.
Second. We're just doing what the mud's already doing, right?
That's correct. Basically, we're just ensuring that the flows we receive at the wastewater plant are in line with what the plant's designed to operate under.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tem White made the motion, Councilor Marshall made the second, all those in favor? Motion carries. Ten B.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending city of Missouri City ordinance number oh, oh-two, fourteen, adopted March eighteenth, two thousand two, as amended, providing terms and conditions for the compensation and classification plan as set forth in the personnel manual, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Move to doubt.
I have a question for Dr. Williams. If the evaluation or the classification lead to a title change, let's say going up or going down, will the monetary compensation be adjusted accordingly?
Yes, sir, that's the simple answer. But the title change generally does not have a compensation associated with it. You would then want to look at what we call compensable factors, specifically education, experience, freedom to act, fiscal responsibility and a number of other point value systems that we associate with each of the position in our pay plan.
Right, because under the fiscal analysis, you put no impact on the city budget. But if that lead to monetary compensation adjustment, is will have an impact on the city budget?
Absolutely. That, one of the consideration is that the city manager ultimately reviews these requests before they are approved. And in most cases, departments submit that as part of their budget process when they can anticipate that, and that is actually taken into account as part of the budget review process.
Had this ever been done before, or is this something we do periodically?
This is some, do you want?
Well, yeah, actually, this ordinance is a callback to an ordinance that we had in place about six years ago or so. The primary change for this is in relation to what was then, was what was called the job evaluation team that was put into place. And it was one where I don't think it ever really worked to the intention that it was put in place. And it ended up with the city manager and the HR director really doing what this ordinance now does, which is sitting down and looking at the requests for any changes in classification and determining if there needs to be any changes or not. So this essentially is kind of a pared-down version of what we're doing already. And it also is a callback to what the city had in place about six years ago.
And in addition, what this does is that it plays an effect under your guidance, direction, the true evaluation of these positions, which is based on what people do in comparison to what the market and what people do at other places. And I wouldn't say that, because the answer about job titles was wrong. Job titles don't determine salaries. It's what people do determines salaries.
Absolutely. How would you handle the situations that, for example, standard industry require a person to have a college degree in order to have that position? And based on the evaluation, that person do not have formal education requirement, how is it going to be handled?
One of the standard methods of dealing with that, Councilman, is, that's a very common practice. One of the common ways of dealing with that is to look in at an equivalency in terms of years of experience in a very comparable or similar position. So while a position may desire or require a bachelor's degree, you may look at comparable experience at a similar level. And working with the city manager, you then make a determination as to whether or not one year would be equivalent to the same number of educational level, be it an associate's or a bachelor's degree.
Right, but it is subjective, Governor.
But to answer to what he was asking, isn't it also, one of the answers, the answer you gave was correct in one side. Isn't it also the best practice that on the other side where you, if it's a certification or whatever it is that needed, that you, prior to giving that employee an advance notice within two years of this time, to go back and get re-certified or not as well?
Absolutely, the process actually begins with the job evaluation, which is part of the announcement of the job when you're doing a search. If it is a current, it may then become a performance issue whereby, as part of the performance improvement plan for that employee, you would then outline a plan by which you would give him or her a timeline to get certified as required by the position today.
But also, education, degrees, et cetera, are evaluated and determined based on their essential functions as required by the U.S. Department of Labor.
Absolutely.
So even these companies may require this stuff, it has to have some essential elements to perform in the job.
Right, those are essential functions that are generally about seventy-five to eighty percent in most of the companies when you look at them differently, or you try to compare them.
Sometimes the education is the core requirement, so the certification is the core.
That would be an essential function. In other words, I got a degree in history, and I want to be an accountant. Well, a degree in history may not be an essential function, but an accounting degree.
But to evaluate it based, to make those evaluations based on job experience and tenure is subjective at best, just for my own.
Absolutely, and again, that's one of the reasons you look at it. And it is almost impossible to get every position identical to those in the private or public sector. So what you look for, you agree, we're looking for the basic or essential functions, which mean that an accountant perform accounting type of work in most companies. Now, they may differ in terms of what type or how specific they become, but ultimately, the essential function deals with accounting types of things, such as accounts payable, accounts receivable and so on.
And to both ads, I think, you know, in the job market, when you go out for market analysis and the value of each position or title to compare apple to apple, it might be whereas you have them lined to that job. And I know sometimes you take a position and you add two, you know, two or three different functions to it where you're trying to search that person on the network of all around, and you can't seem to find where they fit in that category or in the range of what they're supposed to receive.
Right.
But I think so, to have this more collectively would probably benefit in the long run.
And I think that, to that point, Councilman, one of the things that we talked about in the market study is, Ed wants us to ensure that there is a process for maintaining, once we receive the data back from the compensation and benefit study, that there is a process in place where we can maintain this on an ongoing basis. I'm of the opinion that this, approving this would allow us to move closer to that step.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So based on your experience of managing human resources, do you anticipate some big change in title?
I would say no, I think we are pretty much on track. There may be some minor adjustment based on evolving positions, but I'd say most of our positions are correctly classified, as best I know.
Yeah, it's one to where, we occasionally have requests, and this is, again, this goes more towards the policy versus the process. What you had defined in the ordinance was a process. And it was a process that, in my opinion, didn't work that well. And so this takes you actually back up to the policy in which case, and the process is still defined by the city manager and the HR department on to how then those are, but we have them come through occasionally, and we reject them and modify them, and some even get approved, depending on if they actually meet the job data classification process and what all that comes to.
Good.
All right, there was a motion by White and a second by Emery. Huh? Yeah. I got too many names on it. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, we're down to ten I.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending chapter seventy-four Parks and Recreation of the Missouri City Code, amending the rules and regulations pertaining to certain activities prohibited in public parks, providing for repeal, providing a penalty and providing for severability.
Mayor and Council, this came about as a result of a request for a casino night at our new city center. And right now, the way that our ordinance is written, that is on park property, and therefore falls under the section seventy-four dash three, fourteen, which states that it's unlawful, among other things, to quote, "maintain or exhibit any gambling table or other instrument of gambling or gaming." So merely exhibiting it, we're in violation of our ordinance. Whereas state law, under section, excuse me, Texas Penal Code, section forty-seven point oh-six, makes it offense with the intent to further gambling, not just to exhibit a table, but to actually take part in the activity of promoting gambling and gambling actually taking place on our property. We're recommending that we strike our existing seventy-four dash three, number fourteen, and fall back on Texas Penal Code, section forty-seven oh-six, which then makes it a. Penal Code, Section 4706, which then makes it a penalty when a person knowingly possesses a gambling device that the person knows is designed for gambling purposes, not just merely showing it or having. For instance, if you have a table, if you had a card table in the community center, then that would be a violation under our existing ordinance, even if the intent was a charitable.
Let's fix this real quick.
It's charitable, and that's, that's what we have. We've had this request.
He betting on the pong over to.
Let's get this fixed.
He betting on tennis matches, but like you're saying, all this does is clarify that puts the monkey back on the state's back where the laws are clear, but it, you know, the whole purpose is, we've got organizations that have come to us, and they want to have casino nights. I can tell you, the employees of Missouri City have had casino nights, but we had them in the community center, but the community center was not considered a park. This is what's made this different, and Ridge View High School has come to us, and they want to have a fairly large event in our new community center for their fundraising, for their athletic booster club, and all of a sudden, we found out that we couldn't allow them because of this ordinance being what it is. So, and I think, again, it clears up that the purpose, it's going for nonprofits and things, it's fine if they, if they're betting real money, they're going to pay the price for the state.
Correct.
Move to the.
So that's been good.
So this means that we'd be able to get Bridge and Domino's and Bingo at the rec center?
As long as you're not gambling.
Well, we won't be gambling, but we just want to know if we can do it.
It is, and it's a good point, and we just have bingo and stuff, and, you know, that has been talked about as one of the activities that people want to start doing again, is bingo night, and we got a machine, we saved it out of the old building. It's one of the few things we saved out of the old building. Who made the second?
I did.
Councilor Helen Cat, the gambler.
I rolled over.
I rolled, all right. Been a motion and a second?
We have a.
Very good.
Everybody heard you say that.
Hi.
Nobody voted over.
I know. Y'all didn't vote over there?
I did, now.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to get clear.
Yeah, and I, when is Ridge Point's activity scheduled? Because we need to get them word.
Tyson may still be around, it's in January.
Oh, so we got time to do that in a second, so I'd tell them we need, we're moving forward that's getting it approved.
Be sure of this, so if Ridge Gate or Ridge.
Ridge Point.
Wants to do casino night, as long as they're not in the new center, as long as they're not gambling, showing money.
Money, right.
It's okay.
You can use paper money and use it for prizes or whatever you want to, you just can't gamble for people to walk away with cash.
But this opens it up, not just for the city center, this opens it up for any park, any of our parks.
Exactly.
We're relying on the state to govern.
And our own police officers.
Yeah, our police officers.
Our police officers will enforce that better than anybody. It's probably happening more so on the golf course, Floyd, than it.
I don't know. Never seen a dollar. Never seen a dollar change hands on the golf course. You haven't? Never.
Oh, no, you're right, not on the golf course, it's always in the community center.
I want to remind him.
Yeah, okay. All right, all those in favor? Did we vote?
Yeah, we did.
All right, it was Dom was a late vote. All right, item 11, a resolution's 11A.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, accepting a United States Department of Homeland Security Urban Area Security Initiative grant to fund the purchase of vehicle-mounted and handheld radio devices for the police department, designating the mayor as the city's authorized official to accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grant, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Move to the.
Second.
Councilman Smith made the motion. Councilman Nguyen made the second.
He wearing a different hat tonight, representing the police for this.
Oh, yeah. Well, he had to apply for the grant, the police will use the radios, and Mr. Gert back there, since he is a police person.
Specialist.
Administers those radios, that's why I got joined by Mr. Gert. Radio Gert back there.
Yes, sir.
Been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
By the way, thank you so much for the ride, in the national night out.
You bet.
As a matter of fact, they made us sing at one of the parties.
Oh, yeah. Only city announcement that I've got is that Chamber of Commerce had a fantastic golf tournament today in our new community center. Hopefully, that will be an annual event for us. It was, brought 130 players into the, into the new center, and I know Floyd was there, and I know he probably heard as many as I did, and about how many people were just ranting and raving about the beauty of that building.
And the golf course.
By encouraging people to vote.
Huh? Oh, and voting tomorrow, well, Kevin's already encouraged everybody, he did that early on.
Yeah.
He's a precinct judge over there, but anyway, it was great, and I think the center's getting very good reserve, reviews, and let me just say that Sunday, we had our first brunch, and Ken told me today, I think we had 122 people that came to brunch on Sunday. That's going to be a monthly thing, December the 2nd.